He has an iPhone.
Nope.
No, that's a Samsung.
That's Samsung, yeah.
He's taking her picture.
Okay. All right. First item up is adoption of the agenda. Is there anything emergent that needs adding?
No, sir.
Okay. Would somebody want to move it for adoption? James? Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Next item up is accounts payable for information. Somebody want to move that? Matt? Any questions or concerns?
I have one question. We have, do we hire a, uh, events coordinator for Red Cliff Days? For the tune of four hundred and... Four hundred and thirty-five dollars?
For food trucks and vendors.
Yeah, for food trucks and...
Yes, sir, that is correct. Shannon has confirmed that there was a person hired to coordinate the food trucks and the, uh... And some of our events and vendors.
Okay.
Um, I had a question as well. The payment, um, E F T forty-eight seventy-three, is that a final payment for that project?
Yes, sir, I believe it is. If that's the pool?
Yeah.
Roof? Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then one more?
Okay.
There's, uh, a bill here, I can't find it right now, for tree grinding. Is that from the storm?
I don't know.
Uh, that's under a landfill.
This would be too fast, I think, to be the storm.
Because there's still piles of them laying out there.
Yeah, I don't think that's what it's for. Let us just find it.
That's under a landfill.
Because if it's under the landfill, we did grinding out there for...
Oh, is it under land?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
They did do a bunch of tree grinding out there, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Speaking of those trees, it's off topic, but when, what's the plan for getting those cleaned up and also when?
This is off topic.
It is.
We're, we're working on it. We just had to find a trucker to do some hauling.
Oh, okay. So, soon-ish?
I just have one question as well.
Is it payment related?
It's on, what we're talking, uh, accounts bill.
Okay, that, that's good, yeah?
Yeah. Uh, number eight-five-nine-seven-five, food for July fifth incident. What does that mean?
That means that we bought food for some of our firefighter staff and, um... Bylaw for a incident, um, fire response, uh, in the middle of the night where a tanker had some issues.
Okay. I just saw incident and I wasn't too sure, so.
For the cleanup, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I know what day that was.
Um, E F T forty-seven ninety-seven, this playground feasibility study, is that for the accessibility playgrounds that we talked about?
Yes, sir, that study is finished. We've got the results back and Carter will be preparing an agenda item for next council.
Cool.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. All right, moving on to number two, delegations. We have Staff Sergeant Michael Court- Courtney to give us a report. Welcome.
Room Staff Sergeant Michael Court.
Oh, yeah. I don't think I called him that last time.
That's part of the report you're getting ahead again, Chris, sorry. So, yes, I guess we'll go right to the statistics of the couple pages down. And that's further down, but I can speak to that later. So, with the statistics over the last quarter, uh, persons crimes, uh, has been down for, um, this quarter by nineteen percent over, uh, twenty-twenty-one and down fifteen percent over the last five years. Uh, to break it down a little further, uttering threats, uh, files that we've dealt with, uh, they were up by one hundred percent over twenty-twenty-one. However, there were only six occurrences for uttering threats, uh, in this quarter. Uh, one was cleared by charge. The remainder were unfounded or found to have insufficient evidence to proceed, so either there was no actual threat that took place or, uh... It was more of a unwanted communications rather than threatening, uh, communications. Assaults, uh, were up by thirty, or, yeah, were up by thirty-three percent over twenty-twenty-one's, uh, numbers during this quarter and down fifty-three percent over the last five years. Of the eight reported assaults, three were cleared by charge. Uh, two victim, victims declined to lay charges and the other two had insufficient evidence to proceed or were, were unfounded and one incident is actually still outstanding. Uh, the criminal harassment, to round that off, that, uh, is down by sixty-seven percent over twenty-twenty-one in the same quarter and there were only two incidents, uh, this time, uh, during the quarter and both were unfounded and had insufficient evidence to proceed and those two as well were more of a unwanted, uh, communication by telephone or Facebook and not cr- criminal harassment in the true sense of criminal harassment. Uh, with regards to property crimes over this quarter, over the last quarter, uh, they were down by four percent and also down, uh, in the, compared to twenty-twenty-one and they were down by sixteen percent over the last five years. And to break that down further, uh, break-in enters were up by twenty-five percent over twenty-twenty-one however, down by forty-four percent over the last five years. And of that, oh, five break-in enters, uh, were reported. Uh, three were commercial properties where some fences were cut and, uh, during those three incidents, there was mostly fuel that they were targeting in vehicles or in tanks. And, uh, that was right around the same time that we had a crime spree ongoing in the county as well. And we, although these incidents that happened, uh, within the municipality, we had insufficient evidence to proceed to actually lay charges, we suspect it was the same group of people that were doing it and we did lay charges in regards to other incidents in the county on these, uh, individuals who were active, yeah, in the area at that time. Uh, one other break-in enter was, uh, stolen property from a shed and the other one was, uh, stole, stolen property from attached garage, but, uh, during that one, the complainant, once they discovered, uh, who the suspect was, they declined to lay charges. They knew the person, so they didn't want to proceed with any charges. Uh, with regards to, uh, theft under five thousand within the, uh, town, uh, they were up by fifty, uh, seven percent from twenty-twenty-one that same quarter but overall down by forty-eight percent over the last five years. Uh, there were eleven incidents of thefts. Two were cleared by charge, uh, two of the victims declined to lay any charges once the accused was identified and the remainder had insufficient evidence to proceed. When I did look at most of those thefts under, there was some, one where it was a theft of a catalytic converter on an older vehicle that was parked on a property. Uh, there was a theft from motor vehicles and, uh, some of the other ones were, uh, theft of fuel with gas and dash. There are some gas stations out there that still turn on the pumps without getting the person to pay first and it's, uh, it leads to sometimes people driving off forgetting to pay because they think they paid and usually when we contact them, they return and pay it or, uh, sometimes if that's an actual gas and dash where they're not paying for it and leaving. Uh, during that same time for property crimes, mischief, uh, damaged property was down by eight percent over twenty-twenty-one, uh, during the quarter and of the twelve incidents reported, uh, one accused was under the age of twelve. It was a family-related mischief and no charges were laid in that. It was dealt with alternatively. Uh, one of the victims declined to lay any charges once the accused was identified and the remainder had insufficient evidence to proceed with charges. And most of the incidents were vandalism or attempted theft from vehicles where some damage was caused or a broken window in a vehicle. Uh, other incidents, uh, of mischief that are reported on here, those include mostly, uh... Let's see here, obstruction or enjoyment of property and that's mostly like nuisance or noise complaints. Most of them were loud parties, fireworks and things like that which, once the police showed up, spoke with the people, they either turned down the music or, uh, were gone from the area and weren't loitering or things like that anymore, so. Uh, other criminal code files, uh, had no civic, significant increase from twenty-twenty-one and overall a forty-three percent decrease over the last five years, so there wasn't much to report there. Uh, offensive weapons, uh, complaints, we didn't have any over this quarter, so it ended up being down by a hundred percent because we had two in the previous, uh, year's quarter. And the other type of, uh, other criminal clo- codes including disturbing the peace, uh, they were up by a hundred and fifty percent and, uh, sixty-seven percent over the last five years and those are also like nuisance, noise calls or family disturbances that were classified as disturbing the peace but no, no charges were laid. And our breaches and failed to comply, uh, charges were down by thirty-eight percent over twenty-one, twenty-one, uh, during the same quarter and down by sixty-nine percent over the last five years. Uh, right now, we don't have as many people in the community on conditions or bail release that we used to have, so that's why there's not as many being charged, so. Any questions on any of those statistics? With regards to the property crimes, one of our initiatives that I put into the, uh, annual performance plan was that members actually use our Agora online training to take, uh, what's called the community or, uh, Crime Prevention through Environmental Design training and that way there, so when they go to these types of calls, a lot of them are kind of vehicles left unlocked and things being stolen, so if we can educate the public and let them know how to make their property a little less attractive for crimes of opportunity, property crimes, then we can kind of prevent some of these crimes from happening, so that's one of the initiatives that I put in the place and right now we're at about fifty percent where the members have trained, have, uh, taken that training, so I'm still working on getting people to get into the online training system to do it, so. With regards to our staffing, uh, at the detachment, we're still experiencing some staffing shortages. However, several changes have occurred over the last several months. So, obviously, uh, as stated before, the detachment commander position was filled permanently and I was the successful candidate, promoted to staff sergeant, now I'm in the detachment commander position. I was transferred immediately. My old unit didn't keep me any longer and they just said, "Well, transfer you right away" because I was already in the acting position. In June of twenty-twenty-two, both corporal supervisor positions that were vacant, uh, were filled by way of promotion. Uh, one of the successful candidates is Corporal Ian Heinel and he, uh, he's been at the detachment for several years now and he was in one of the acting supervisor positions and he was successfully promoted, so he moved into that position right away. And the other, uh, corporal supervisor, uh, that was promoted is from Chilliwack Detachment and he, uh, needs to sell a house and then once he sells his house and gets out this way, then he will assume his position here as well. We're anticipating hopefully before Christmas, but it all depends on when the house gets, uh, sold and he can get over here and find a residence as well. Uh, there still remain several soft vacancies at the detachment and although it's impacting, uh, the manpower at the detachment, we're, we're filling the vacancies mostly through overtime and switching of shifts so that we can better have, make sure that we keep our minimums, uh, members working so that we can, uh, have adequate coverage for call, calls for service and things like that. Uh, with regards to our annual performance plan, uh, during, uh, within the, the town, we've had two check stops. Not as a result of the check stops, but outside of that, there were also two immediate roadside seizures with relation to alcohol. Uh, there were fifty-two traffic occurrences, uh, various, uh, provincial fences. Only three were speeding related and the other ones were other types of moving violations and non-moving violations and, uh, several were seat belts as well. Uh, with regards to community engagement, uh, members were active this summer in the Red Cliff Days during the parade, uh, foot patrols in the park, foot patrols in and around the town during the evening acti- activities. Uh, the Dunk Tank, uh, Decoration Day ceremonies in town and several other meetings with, uh, stakeholders and community. Uh, there are, I think I stated this earlier or in the other previous meeting, some of the community groups that were together, like the Citizens Advisory Committee, there's a lot of members, once I reached out to them, that aren't continuing with that program, so we're gonna have to recruit new members in the various communities throughout the, the county and within the town and also, uh... Liaising with other types of groups like rural crime. They haven't had a meeting since, since their, uh, since pre-COVID, so hopefully we'll be getting together with them real soon. Uh, with regards to the Alberta Provincial Policing Service's priorities, uh, some of them are community safety, well-being and crime reduction. Uh, over these last quarter, uh, the Red Cliff Detachment has worked very closely with, uh, Medicine Hat Alert Property Crimes and our Southeast, Southern Alberta District Crime Reduction Unit. They actually came down and worked with us during our rural crime spree that we had and assisted us in doing extra patrols and locating some of our suspects and getting them into custody. And with regards to enhancing engagement and communication with communities and stakeholders, uh, like I said, over the last couple of years, several of the committees, the volunteer committees out in town and throughout the county, uh, have kind of slowed with their meetings and we're gonna start getting those going again. And we've also, uh, been given a tool called Rave Communication where we can create groups and send out messages quickly to like rural crime, citizens on patrol. So, I'm inputting all that data right now so that we can do tests and have a quick way to communicate with citizens, stakeholders and groups through that system as well to update them on anything that's going on with regards to policing in the, in the community, so. Any questions on any of that stuff? I think that's it for me, except for the one area of the, uh, the package with regards to municipal, uh, financials, uh, section. There's just two areas I wanted to highlight. It was on page six of seven, somewhere in there.
It's on page sixteen of ours. There it is.
So, one of the items that's slightly higher, uh, within the year-to-date expenditure, expenditures is overtime and that's due to requiring overtime to fill the soft vacancies that we have right now. And one of the other, uh, commissioner and guarding is up a little bit and that is because we're using, uh, when we're unavailable, we can't get guards to come in that are commissioners, then we supplement that with, uh, members which are, come in on overtime to do the guarding and that can create a slightly, uh, higher amount in funds and, uh, through that, I'm gonna be starting to look for additional guards and commissioners so we can offset that. And once, uh, summer annual leave and some people start filling the positions, then the overtime should drop significantly as well, so. Other than that, everything else appears to be on target for the, the planned financial plan for the year. Any questions on that?
Just one. That's it? Okay. Anybody have any, anything? Does somebody want to move his report for information? Jim? All in favor? Opposed? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you there.
Thank you.
Now, we move on to minutes, here of council minutes of July eighteenth.
I'll move for adoption.
Chris? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then council meeting held July twenty-fifth for adoption.
How many?
James? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried. And then the M P C meeting of July twentieth for information. Larry?
Larry's gone.
Larry's right here. Oh!
You wanna see him?
No, not really.
Any questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. Okay, moving on to bylaws. We have bylaw nineteen forty-four slash twenty-twenty-two being a bylaw to amend bylaw sixteen ninety-eight slash twenty-eleven, the land use bylaw. And it's here for first reading.
Put it on the table for first reading?
Okay, Kathy?
I have a question. Where is this property?
V tax.
Just across the highway, yeah.
Okay. So, it's just as, for, if I'm reading this right, it's just a zoning issue. They want to change it so they could put a shop in there.
Yeah.
A restaurant.
Change it is.
Okay, any other questions or concerns?
Thought it'd be nice to spruce that area up.
Okay.
Do you want an old gas station instead?
All right. All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. All right, moving on to five, requests for decisions, bylaw enforcement appointments for consideration. Let me get through all this.
I'm through option one.
Okay.
To the point. Steena. For those.
Okay. So, Chris is moving option one. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And then, uh, item B, a letter regarding First Street Southwest for consideration.
See for information.
Okay. Kathy's moving it and it's received for information.
Three hundred block of First Street Southwest, that's the, right behind the pool, right? Or at the one block over?
One block down, one block south from there.
Yeah.
It's not one block. Could we not just put it towards, move it towards, uh, budget talks and, and we can really decide then? Not, we're not just shooting it down?
I was wondering if maybe, if that road's in such terrible concern, maybe moving it up on the priority of inspecting the underground services might be a good...
And get it on my SIP.
Did you decline it?
Nope, I hit rejoin.
It dropped. He later dropped.
Nope, there he is still.
Dropped internet or dropped?
Can you hear us, Larry?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments or concerns?
He's way behind. So, he can't vote in real time?
Yeah, he does. He must be listening to something again.
Oh. You okay right now, Larry?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I can't, I can't see, but it's like...
Right. Yeah, we're having difficulties with that. We don't see ourselves either, so, but we can see you. There you go.
Are you up to date on what we're about to vote on? It's replaying the meeting.
Okay, so Kathy's moved it for information, so really if you guys want it considered for anything else, you wouldn't be voting in favor of it, you'd just be defeating her motion, or if you move it for information, it's... All in favor? Opposed? That is defeated. Okay. Does anybody want to make another motion?
Can I? Um, can I make motion number two there? Direct administration to assess the three hundred block of First Street in comparison to other roads on the my SIP. But can we amend it to include? Um, I don't know how to word it, but like, seeing what the underground services are like, because you guys are in the process of that around town in a, whatever process you're doing it, correct?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm, I'm understanding that you would like to move to direct administration to assess the three hundred block of First Street Southwest, uh, roads and underground.
Yes.
Um, for comparison to other sections on the my SIP list.
Yes, that's what I meant to say, thank you.
And give it a my SIP rating?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what I was trying to say.
Okay. So, James has moved that option. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about that? Second? Seeing none? Call, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. He's voting on time, he's just listening way back.
Yeah.
All right, moving on to correspondence. Ukrainian, Canadian Congress.
Did he say he's hungry?
No.
Oh, Chris just asked, are you okay?
He's playing, he's replaying the meeting about three minutes late, so he just played Chris's question.
Because it was so good.
And she's turned on the speaker now, so we get dual play here.
That's okay.
Okay, it's all good. I know what's going on.
Now we can't hear Larry.
That's okay.
Yeah, we can hear you. We just don't, don't want to keep hearing your replay, so I just turned your volume down. It's all good. Okay. Does somebody making this motion?
Oh, I can make the motion. Or you, does much matter.
For information?
Just for information, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Chris is moving it for information. Any questions or concerns?
Are we going to fly a Ukrainian flag?
Not if we just move it for information.
Okay.
I'm okay with no.
It's on my phone. Okay.
I think if we did that, it would probably cause residents, "Oh, the war."
Yeah.
It's not it.
No, just asking because it was...
I know what I'm asking.
Yeah, but if we just move it for information, we're not moving any to...
Yes.
Perfect.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns? All in favor? Opposed? That is carried. And moving on to other, we have Alberta Municipalities Fall Conference Meeting with Transportation Minister Panda. There's three things. Did anybody think of anything else?
When I talked to you about, did I say photo radar or did I say the red light camera?
Photo radar was what we agreed to.
I said photo radar. I meant the red light camera, because we had a red light camera project a few years ago.
Oh, okay.
That we discussed, unless council wants to talk about a photo radar project.
Sounds like councillor Denver wants money for the town.
Well, originally the plan, uh, uh, there was a full, a red light, I almost said photo radar again, so I probably did say photo radar. Uh, there was a red light camera project proposed for the highway traveling in one direction.
Like Highway and Broadway?
Highway and Mitchell.
Oh.
Is where the red light camera was proposed, heading east. There have been a few accidents there and it is a money generator too. So, when she called and asked me if we had anything to talk to Transport Minister about, that's the first thing that popped in my head. So, don't know how, what our appetite is as a council on that, but...
Why was it defeated last time?
Uh, you have to get permission from the Alberta government proving that it's not a cash cow, that it is actually for safety and they felt that we weren't satisfying that need. Yeah.
So, hopefully they don't watch these meetings.
Yeah, no, there's not much to watch. Okay, so anyways, I, so I put that on there. Uh, I don't know what the rest of councils feel is on that. That's what I put on. From the fellow side, didn't realize that he'd be the person to talk to for waste water treatment. He is.
Larry? Do you have something? Do you have any ideas of what you would like to ask Minister Panda? Okay. Well, that was.
River water, like building a dam?
Fit down. Wait, with bill. And are they looking for two or you don't meet with them either? Is that what this is?
That's correct, sir. It would be the, the, it would be council members and myself. And Jason would be in attendance. I don't have a, a staff meeting, I don't know.
Okay.
What, uh, what were you kinda getting at with ditch maintenance there?
To be honest, I don't even recall that one.
Um, that was the one I went to Jason for, um, to see if they will continue or if they will do some ditch maintenance, I believe.
I know during the course of the summer, there was, um, some thought that some mowing, um, needed to occur in the, in the ditch, and we attempted to undertake some on our own before we realized it was Alberta transportation property. Uh, that was what, uh, that was my thoughts behind, including that on the list.
So they're not mowing the ditches enough?
Well, that was, I mean, there's, there was a, for us to undertake, want to undertake that, to enter our minds to think that we needed to do it, it was making me think that perhaps that we weren't happy with that. I'm not sure to what standard we've held them to in the past or what agreements have been, come to with them. So, uh, it was my thought to pursue that with them. But very well may not be a very big issue in the overall scheme of things though.
Well, I don't think there's been any motion made on this. Um, but if two of these are actually, if these aren't very heavy, then what it says at the bottom is probably what we should do, 'cause you've already done this, 'cause the deadline has passed.
Yes, sir, we had a deadline of, of August twelve.
So you set it up with these three things on it?
Yes. And we can change or amend or cancel the meeting, but at least you've had a meeting should there be something critical.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's the way to go in this scenario. I'd hate for us to want to talk about something and we didn't reserve a spot.
Right.
So, yeah.
I don't know, my, my opinion on it is, I'm not sure if it's worth taking up his time for these particular issues this year.
Well, then we just need a motion of something from somebody.
Well, I'll make a motion to cancel. And you guys can vote whether you agree.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so James has made a motion to r- cancel the meeting.
Is that a negative?
No, that's a positive.
That's a positive?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you defeat it, then we won't cancel the meeting.
All right.
Sorry, when was this meeting supposed to take place again?
During the AUMA.
Oh, okay.
That we have not been, we've put our request in to meet.
But it hasn't been approved yet.
We haven't received a date or a time at this moment.
No, but he's not a highly competent minister. He, she? I thought it was a mystery. I'm sorry.
No pronouns on here.
No, that changes things.
No, it doesn't. Um, she's not a highly competent minister, so it would probably get approved.
Chris, this is, this is right next to Municipal Affairs. This is like second. Sometimes it's higher.
I wouldn't have thought, okay. I don't mean to spoil affairs for that meaning.
I don't wanna talk about how you don't think. That's not what we're here for. Okay.
Go back to your.
What, are you wearing sandals?
Oh, are you wearing shoes?
So we can change these, if need be, these topics, right?
Yes, up until the meeting.
Okay. I don't know, I think maybe we could get, take another few weeks to really think about if they wanna change it or not. Seeing as how we can change it, change the topics. And see if we can really come up with.
But if we don't have anything to really.
This came up a month ago or two months ago.
Well, that was Minister of Municipal Affairs, the first one, right? This is a different minister now, so, go ahead, Kathy, your hand is up.
It, just my thought is that it took ten years of bugging, uh, transportation before we got our new water treatment plant for drinking water. We could very well, if we have the need for a wastewater treatment plant in five years, we're gonna need to start bugging them now to get it on the radar.
Good point.
And we know darn well that we are growing, not very fast, but we are growing. Uh, I can honestly see us at least having our, our own water, wastewater treatment plant for half the town because of the capacity issues we have off and on hitting the city. So I think we should be getting a wastewater treatment plant at least on their map because we could be bugging them for the next ten years, and by the time we get the money or the go-ahead, we'll have it.
I can't remember if it was at AUMA last year or where it was that I heard it, but I heard the province was trying to cut back on the amount of wastewater treatment plants. And trying to encourage shared resources.
Yeah, shared resources.
I think, actually, I think it might have been Stantec, people that did our sewer study who told us that.
But we still need to get it on the radar.
Okay.
That's certainly the most important one on this list. The other two were kind of stretching.
I'll just call the question then.
Yep. Oh, that's kind of good.
All in favor? Opposed? It's defeated, so there, there you go. It's still there. We may not get accepted, but it's still there. All right, Alberta Municipalities Fall Conference for information.
Don't we have to deal with the previous one then, in the positive?
No, it's.
No, okay, never mind. Yeah, we'll start on the positive.
Okay.
No one else will, I'll move it, we receive it for information.
Good job, James.
Feel like a motion hog today.
Any questions or concerns? Looks really exciting. Has anybody clicked on the link to the resolution book?
I read through a few of them, I didn't make it through all of them, no.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. All right, on-call report for information.
I'll move for information.
Any questions or concerns?
Do we really have people calling the on-call phone saying they're lost?
Yes, sir, I took that from my own self.
Oh, I thought that was just maybe an example.
No.
Every example I've used has actually happened on our on-call phone from the reports I've reviewed.
All right.
So did you give them directions?
Well, I'd be the last person to give directions in Redcliffe.
If you lived in Redcliffe, that might be a little bit different.
I drive every road in Redcliffe and I know how to get where I'm going, but I couldn't tell you the street names.
Any other questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And. Municipal manager report to council for information.
See for information.
Kathy? Questions or concerns, James?
Um, I saw a note here for the rectangle that you guys rented dehumidifiers. I'm not sure when that happened, but is that helping?
Significantly.
Yeah?
Yeah, it's reduced the, uh, there's basically no fog, uh, being generated, and the condensation on the roof that would drip onto the ice and form little bumps that was causing some issues with the Zamboni and skaters, uh, is not happening.
Was that just from excessive heat outside and excessive cold inside?
Temperature differential, and, uh.
There is humidity in the air because it's warm outside and it hits, gets in there, it gets cooled off and you should know that.
Then it starts to breathe.
Yes, and, and the P chart.
Yeah, done, no question.
Yeah.
So we thought that before taking the, or even approaching council, with the concept of maybe buying humidifiers, dehumidifiers, we tested first and it seems to work.
So we're gonna start air conditioning the arena? That's what a dehumidifier is, so. Okay.
Sorry, that was.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that is carried, and landfill graphs. Larry? Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. And important meetings and events.
I'll move for information.
James? Hmm. I got an email. Oh. Did you get an email from Bethnecks?
Yes, I got that today, sir.
Just today?
Yes.
There was one.
Yes.
And it is coming up mid-September, right?
Yes, sir.
So there'd be time for one more meeting?
I believe so.
It's just their community day and they're inviting everybody that wants to go, so.
I will be sending that out tomorrow.
Okay, all right, then we don't really need it in there. Okay. Any questions or concerns on any of those days? All in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Do we need a recess?
Why don't?
No, all right.
Oh, nope.
Would somebody like to move us into closed then, Jim? All in favor? Opposed, that is carried.